Okay, I think it is time. So, um, I will call the meeting to order.
Wait, we need one more person, don't we? Who else is here? I'm not, you're right, okay, we're good, sorry.
Sue is up here.
I stopped it, Joe, Ed, all right. Hey, everybody else? All right, I'm muted.
Sue is here, right?
Right. So what I'd like to do to start, and we may have people who continue to join us, but we do have enough people to start. So, you know, so since it's time, we'll start with a roll call so that we have it in the minutes, who is here. And then, again, just a reminder, all votes will also be done by roll call. And I want to ask people if, when you're not talking, if you can just please mute yourself to kind of cut down on background noise. So, I will start with, um, I will start with the school committee members, and I'm just doing it in alphabetical order by town. Acton, I'm here. Arlington, do we have Sue?
Yes, we do. Sue Scheffler Arlington.
Is here. Belmont.
Yes, Jim Gamble here.
Okay, Bolton.
Dave O'Connor Bolton here.
Great. Concord.
People do, Concord here.
Okay, Dover. Does look like Ford is here. If not at this moment. Um, Lancaster.
Lancaster here.
Lexington.
Dave Horton Lexington here.
Yes. Needham. Yep, Jeff is on mute, but he's saying that he's here. And Stowe.
Alice DeLuca Stowe here.
Yes, great. And can others introduce yourselves?
Ed Bookwell, superintendent.
Connie Bainer, language teacher.
Chris Reynolds, I'm just the Concord FinCom rep.
Bob Girardi, finance director, sorry.
Amy Peralta, assistant superintendent.
And have we gotten everyone? Dan?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Luke.
Dan O'Brien, communications director.
Yeah, we have Luke McCoy and Greg Joint from Castle Booth on as well.
Okay, thank you very much. I guess first order of business is a motion to adopt remote participation. Could I have a motion?
So moved. Would you like me to read it or not?
I, Julia, it's a plea. Just to cover our bases, yes.
Okay. Vote to adopt remote participation by all members of this Minuteman School Committee pursuant to and in accordance with Sections 2 and 3 of the Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law made by the Governor of Massachusetts on March 12, 2020. Such adoption to be effective until said executive order is rescinded or the Commonwealth's state of emergency as referenced in said executive order is terminated, whichever happens first.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion made and seconded. We need a roll call vote, so again, I'll just go through the towns again. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sue Scheffler Arlington, yes.
Jim Gamble Belmont, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Dave Horton Lexington, yes.
Needham, Jeff?
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes.
Okay, and we did not have Dover on that, just for the, for the minutes. Okay, moving on to Chair's report for good of the organization. Just a couple of things. At our officers' meeting, we had a discussion just saying how much we appreciated both all the work that was being done by, you know, teachers, faculty, administration, and the students to adapt to this remote learning environment, and how much we recognized, you know, that this really is a very difficult time for everyone. So, Dave Horton volunteered, oh, I guess, sort of volunteered, to write a letter from the school committee, you know, to the Minuteman community, the broader Minuteman community, just expressing our appreciation. So I just wanted to let people know that that's in the works. And the, one other thing that I had is that there are, you know, every year we have some members whose term is coming up, and, you know, we have four members this year whose, you know, term is coming up, and that Julia will be reaching out to, to the towns and to those members to let them know that. And I think the people are, you know, myself, Acton, Dave Lexington, Sue in Arlington, and Alice for Stowe.
I'm also up this year.
Oh, okay, Jennifer. Thank you. Didn't have you on my list. Anyone else have anything for the good of the organization? Okay, the next order of business is to approve the proposed school committee calendar. It was sent out, kind of as a, in your packet. Do we have a motion to approve the calendar? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any, any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sue Scheffler Arlington, yes.
Jim Gamble Belmont, yes.
Dave O'Connor, Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Like, Dave, you're on mute.
Yeah, Dave Horton Lexington, yes. Sorry.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the building project report. But is Ford here? I do not see him.
Ford's having trouble logging on, but, so I can get started. He'll, and that, because Luke is on to talk, give us an overview of the athletic fields, as is Kevin is on for that. So, the project update, punch lists are shrinking. I would say the photovoltaic system, we've had some really good news there. We have a meeting, I believe tomorrow at 3 o'clock with a potential new partner. And I'm really confident that the $2 million that was at risk under the lead points program is nowhere near at risk. We'll give you more information as we go, but it's a new vendor, same, a little bit smaller project. Greg Joint from KBA and the team have given the, the vendor some information about having solar panels on the roof rather than a canopy system over the parking lot, which basically I prefer that as well. It's aesthetically less prominent, I guess. And they've been doing an analysis of that. So I'm really, I'm very pleased. Beth Greenblatt has been working hard as well as Greg in getting, getting us moving forward on that. So that's a big relief for, for me. Greg is on, I don't know if you have any questions for Greg around the PV project as it is right now? I see Jim Gamble's hand up. If Jim unmutes.
Can you, can you, can you say who the vendor is?
So the vendor is Select Energy through, it's through the solar options, sorry, power options model. So it's the same procurement method as we were going through with the, the previous partner. It's just the other vendor, basically, that's within that procurement model.
Other question?
Your hand up? I'm sorry.
Alice?
I wonder about putting things on the roof that wasn't designed to have things on it. I wonder about putting things through the roof and ending up with leaking and stuff like that. What, what Greg, do you have to say about that?
So, the system that they're looking into is, from what we understand right now, a non-penetrating ballasted system. So, they're kind of flat panels that sit in a little sled, and the sled gets weight put on it. All of that has to be done in accordance with the roofing manufacturer's warranty guidelines and the, any kind of attachment or integration with the roof has to be done by a certified roofing contractor through the manufacturer. And so, these are things that are done pretty frequently and are done in this way often. Now that the newer systems are getting to be a little bit more efficient and can be at a less inclined angle, they're able to use ballasted systems instead of penetrating systems. So there's a much less likely chance of leaking with those systems, just because you don't have penetrations. So, it's, it's preferable, not that you can't do it both ways, there obviously will be penetrations to get wires and stuff in, but nothing that's more complicated than what you have there now, it's just a little bit more of it. So we, we're pretty comfortable with that system and with the integration, as long as it's done properly.
I have one more question. We had, we had, I've been all excited about having already been permitted for the parking lot, and I wanted to know if there's any permitting required? Are we just sort of chucking the permitting that we did for the parking lot and we don't have any?
So, let's talk permitting in a broad sense. So, the kind of big issues we had, I think, were around planning and zoning, which, based on the impact of this, we would think it would be minimal. If any impact on that kind of process. The nice thing about the way this procurement works is that the provider, the partner, does all of that permitting for you. So, they're wholly responsible for starting the project, designing the project, and implementing the project through construction, and then they're also responsible for operating the project through the completion of the contract. So it is a little bit of a lighter lift for you guys, because you won't have to go through that as much as you normally would on a, you know, building project.
Okay, I think I see. Jim?
Is, is, is this, is the partner, partner going to be able to take advantage of the federal tax, tax credit, the 26% credit?
Yes, we assume so, that, that's, that's, you know, the reason why these programs are typically efficient and can be, be used.
Um, Alice?
There were some calculations done as to the annual income from, or the net, I guess, benefit to the district of having the photovoltaic system to offset the electricity expenses. What is the anticipated offset for this particular solution?
I don't have that in front of me right now, and we do not have a finalized offer. So, unless you have the, the rough numbers from Beth Ed.
I do. She, she sent me a rough analysis and said that this particular partner, the financial benefit was better than the last deal overall. I think because the installation costs are so much less.
Yeah, the, the rooftop is a much less costly installation, therefore you net out a much better result in your, your rate, essentially, so.
She was very pleased with it.
Okay. Back to Jim.
Hi, yes, and, um, what is, what is the size, size in, size in kilowatt hours or?
250, I believe.
Yeah, so I'll give you.
250, okay, so.
Rough numbers, yeah. 250 is AC, so, behind the meter.
I mean, so, I mean, and, and, and we should compare that to the 393 of the canopy.
393 for the canopy, I believe, was DC power.
DC, so.
So, so that was like 320 or something like that, AC. It's, they're slightly different, but it is smaller in size, just based on the roof area, that's kind of plausible to go into. The other reason why is because this provider, based on the power options procurement, is a 250 and under procurement, whereas so, the other provider was 250 and over. So there's kind of a, you know, a line there that they have to like skirt below so that they, they can still do the, the procurement this way. But it does, one, net a very good result to the district in finances, according to Beth, and two, it puts us in a pretty good position for our lead credits, so.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I mean, we would want it, want it to be, you know, virtually certain that we would get the lead credit.
Yeah, yeah, at 250, the, you're always going to get more credits, it's just how many. So, so we're trying to net back the ones that cost a lot, and, and this one is a cost benefit to the district, obviously, so.
Any other questions on that? Ford's on. I don't know if you wanted to say anything, Ford? You, are you, about the project I just said we're moving ahead?
Yeah, let me, I'll just quickly. The Lincoln Building Inspector has accepted the theater. Expect to get our certificate of occupancy in a couple of weeks. There are some small little details that the inspector seems to want, so we're going to get those. We did settle with Griffin for $800,000. The only thing we're waiting for is their signature. Gilbane and Minuteman have done it. That should happen pretty quickly. There are about 40 items on the punch list, 27 are dows, they're really outside jobs, so that should be done within a couple of weeks. And as you may be aware, we've had some ground contamination near the old greenhouse that's been excavated, soil's been, will be taken off the site soon. It hasn't infiltrated the groundwater outside the plume, so we're okay there. We'll have a monitoring well, which will be there for about a year, and the expense of all this will be approximately $30,000, so that's, that's my report.
Any questions for Ford? Jeff?
You're muted, Jeff.
No. Okay, so what was the contamination from? Is this something new? I haven't heard about this before.
It's been around for about four, four weeks, we've known about it. I guess it's, Greg, you're on. I think it's, what, what is it? Do we know?
So there are two sources of contamination. One is somewhat undefined, but is a petroleum-based, they're both petroleum-based, but the one that Ford referred to is excavated now and is a petroleum-based substance, undefined. The other is the fuel oil tanks that were removed a couple of years ago. The feed lines from them to the school have leached over time, so they've created a plume in the area of the greenhouse that needs to be remediated. So, those are the two sources, what they are.
Just to clarify, this is the old, the, the old greenhouse, not the new greenhouse?
That's correct.
Just making sure we're crystal clear on what we're talking about.
We're crystal clear on the new.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on that?
No, I think, what, we go to the fields, and, Ed, I don't know if you want to introduce Luke, or I can?
Sure, Luke McCoy, we're going to give him the, the screen. Luke is a, an extraordinary designer when it comes to athletic fields. He works for KBA, he's been with us all throughout the process, and has worked with us intensely over the last couple of weeks, as we've understood how much, how much money we have and what we could get with the money we have. And Kevin will talk about the money part. But Luke has a presentation to talk about options that we've landed on, and we'd like to hold all the questions till the end, if possible, so write those down. And Luke, do you have control of the screen? Or do you, are you sharing your screen?
I can share my screen.
I can share mine too, and run it if you like.
Well, they're working that out. Just so you know, that KBA does a lot of fields. Derby High School, Weathersfield, Waterbury, are in Connecticut. They did Bodich Field in Framingham, which is a athletic complex. Springfield College, they did the Stag Field, North Annaborough, Canton High School. So this is one of their sweet spots, and, and Luke is the principal architect in charge of this part of their team.
Okay, so, unfortunately, as a participant, it looks like I am disabled from being able to share my screen, so. If someone either would like to give me permission, or if someone else would like to share, I'll just.
Well, Julia, you're the host, I'm not. How did you do this the last time? I'm at school, I got pretty robust internet here, so I could share it pretty easily.
So Julia, if you go to the participants' view, if you click down the bottom where it says participant, and then if you go over to Luke's name on the participant, you can give him permission there.
I got it. Can you see my screen?
We got it.
Crystal clear.
Okay.
I can. All right, so Ed, I appreciate you being, I appreciate Ed taking on being my Vanna White for the evening.
No problem, buddy.
All right, so what we've prepared tonight, this is the, just cover, if you want to go, wouldn't mind the next slide. So let you know the outline of what I want to go over with you all is the, just a refresher on the overall master plan, which was the full build option that was talked about previously. We are going to talk a little bit about why the other options were discussed amongst the group, which all do include synthetic turf fields, and we want to give the background on that decision. And then I will walk through each of the different phasing options, which are basically levels of the athletic facility build-out. Each of those options will have estimated costs and schedule for completion for you, and then finally, open it up for questions. So as I mentioned, the first part I'm going to talk about is the full build with on the campus, so, next slide. So this is the overall plan that was put together, which would accommodate not only all of the school's athletic facility needs, but also accommodate needs from the surrounding communities, the stakeholders who are involved in the process. So, starting up where the track, as we've called out, the stadium track and field, that would be an eight-lane track with track events, disc, shot put, all of that for high school track competitions. You'd have a multi-use synthetic turf field within, which would be utilized for all five sports, football, soccer, boys lacrosse, girls lacrosse, and field hockey. It would be a lit field and track, so you could have evening events. And then also, as part of that, we have shown that auxiliary road, which would have a turnaround to be used for parent drop-off and pickup, as well as emergency services in, so that you have the ability to separate those functions from school functions if happening at the same time. Directly adjacent to the right of that is the softball field, designed as an oversized outfield, which would allow for a half-size, it's a half-size, full-size field in the outfield, or it could be used for full-size youth fields outside of softball season. Softball field itself is designed to meet all the MIAA and Federation requirements for varsity softball field, and in the full build-out would include lighting. Directly adjacent to that and kind of behind the track is the stadium bleachers in the athletic building. That would seat approximately 1,200 particip, view, visitors, spectators. There'd be a press box, which would ADA compliant, and then the building would host, house restrooms, concessions, team rooms, storage, and a host of, of other smaller functions within it. That would be directly usable there. Just to the, kind of below and to the left of that is, is two batteries of tennis courts, there's six courts overall, which meets the high school's needs for hosting tennis matches. And then to the south of that's the varsity baseball field, again, with an oversized outfield that would accommodate a full-size multi-sport field. Again, those tennis courts and all the lights, fields would have lights, and meet the requirements. So, with that being said, some of the questions that have asked and we've gone through is, is why all three are shown as synthetic turf? So I want to walk through the analyses that were done as a group. So the first was looking at annual maintenance costs. So the cost to maintain a field each year, looking at it. And we looked at two scenarios. The first with the baseball softball field being grass and the stadium field being synthetic. And the second option was if all three fields were synthetic. And we went through and put together the annual cost for maintenance. So that would include natural grass mowing, seeding, fertilizing, those kind of things that happen throughout the year. You have the infield clay for baseball softball fields that would be maintained, whether or not it's synthetic or grass, and both options. For the natural grass, you'd have irrigation, which includes not only the water for the irrigation, but annual cost for replacing, you know, a few heads and upkeep and maintenance for that. And then the natural grass fields also require painting and lining. And then the synthetic also, but at a much lesser extent, because the majority of those lines are permanent in light. So when you add those up, we categorized them by each field total cost, and then if you look at the first option total per year, would cost the district $99,500 a year to maintain option one, which is two grass fields and a synthetic field. The second option, which is all synthetic, would cost $28,500. So again, this is keeping in mind that those natural grass fields are maintained the way that they should be, so that they don't go back to the condition where you see a lot of fields which are over-compacted, or there isn't grass growing, things of those nature, to really do a true comparison. So when we look at that as a overall, what we call life cycle of 15 years, the first option would be $1,492, or $92,500, whereas option two with all synthetic would be $427,500. So that's annual maintenance of just upkeep. We took that a step further and looked at overall life cycle over that 15 years, because we know that there's maintenance and things that have to happen throughout, but they're not done every year. They may be every three or four years, or synthetic turf needs to be replaced between the 12, 10 to 15-year mark, somewhere in there depending on needs. So, we took that annual maintenance costs for the same two scenarios, which you'll see in the first line, the 1.492 and the 4.27500. And then we went through and added in those things that happen, not annually, but over time. So natural grass, you'd have some major work done on those at certain times, decompaction, aeration, reseeding, that would happen in four times over a 15-year span. Synthetic turf, you'd top dress with some infill, usually one time in its lifespan. And then you have the. And then you have the replacement of the synthetic turf carpet. And the first scenario would be for one field, the second scenario would be for all three fields. And then we included that second top dressing, assuming that worst case scenario is you end up replacing your field at the 10 to 12 year mark. By the time you hit 15, you may be due to top dress that second field. And then we again added those up per field option, but also total. Where you get in option one, the overall cost for life cycle is 815,000. The overall cost for life cycle for the three synthetic fields is $1,755,000. So you see a little bit of a difference in those kind of surfacing replacement costs. But then you add into that the total annual maintenance costs, and you see that the first option, when combining the two, is $2,307,500. The second option of all synthetic, when you factor in the 15 year plus the annual maintenance, is $2,182. So close, the three synthetic fields are slightly less over a 15 year period. And you can see the cost per year, one, the first option's 153,000, the other's 145,000. But we have to take into account with that, what does that mean usability wise when we talk about the cost? So the next thing, we took that information and compared that to how much use. So next, so same scenario. We took those two different scenarios, and now we added in the number of hours of use you could get for each one of those fields. A natural grass field has a ability to host about 600 hours of use for the field, whereas a synthetic's field can host 1,500 or more hours, because it is not limited. It's not a living, breathing thing that needs to be rested and rejuvenated. So those hours were plugged in under the first line, which is available hours for use. And then the second was we take that and break down that available hours to how many events. So what does that mean for the school and community uses? An event is typically categorized as three hours, that's what it summarizes. That's warm up, the actual game, you know, those kinds of things on there. So we take that 600 hours, that equals 200 events. For the 1,500 hours for synthetic, and that equals 500 events. So that gives us on option one, with two natural grass and synthetic, the ability to host 900 events. On the all synthetic, you're able to host 1,500 events or possibly more. So you have more than double the ability of usage in that three synthetic field option for almost the same cost, and in fact, a little bit less of a cost over the life cycle for them. So if you take it and look at it, kind of what is the cost per event? You have a, the first option is $170 per event, the other is $97 event. And what that really shows is, and I know they'll talk a little bit later about it, is some of the potential revenue ability for the field. You have to keep in mind, in order for the revenue generator to be possible, the fields have to be online. And with the two natural grass field options, they do require one season of rest after every one, after every 600 hours of use. So you'd have to think about at least once per year, one of those fields would be offline and significantly reduce your ability for revenue hours, or hours that you can rent the field to the public with them. Next slide. I know that's a lot of data and numbers to kind of categorize that. Some of the other things when considering natural grass versus synthetic is the ability for natural grass to be susceptible to delays and cancellations. Next slide. So you have here is a couple of things. One is natural grass does require growing seasons once constructed. So right out of that, you do have delays for the use of the field. You'd have three growing seasons, which is about a year to 18 months, depending on construction start before the fields could be used. The second is cancellation due to rain. Natural grass does have the susceptibility to be canceled due to rain, whereas synthetic turf does not run into that susceptibility, obviously excluding light. Everything's canceled for lightning. The other big thing is the spring, especially when you're talking baseball, softball, and trying to rent for lacrosse. Spring is a very conducive season to cancellations, delays, field closures. Especially the last couple of springs we've had, this one obviously not, because spring sports didn't happen. But big thing from coaches was that they spent a lot of time, unfortunately, in the spring in the gym, because they can't get on to the natural grass fields. When they're wet and they play on them, it increases the amount of maintenance that required, and it further deteriorates the field on an ongoing basis. So another one is the ability when those fields to perform and have a consistent and safe playing surface during those different weather conditions. So anyone who's watched a game when it's pouring rain or when it freezes, the natural grass field susceptible to be a very different surface for the athletes playing on it. It's muddy, it can be slippery, things of that. Now synthetic turf is not susceptible to that. It performs the same way, it's dry, wet, cold out. And then finally, as I talked before, is the increase in maintenance. So the more you use a natural grass field, it ups that maintenance number. Or if you play in some of those inclement weathers, it takes more maintenance to bring it back to its original status. So those were some of the benefits that were discussed, is why the third option with the, or the second option with the three synthetic fields. So let's look at that. The last was also, and I mentioned this already, but just because natural grass fields have to rest, it doesn't allow for the opportunity for the revenue from those fields. It doesn't maximize your revenue potential for three fields if they're installed. With that, without any further ado, I'll walk through the various options of phasing for the project. So first, we're calling this phase zero. There is, no matter any of these, there is something that has to be done to the property for the old school as it comes down. So phase zero would be the minimum. And option A under that would be the minimum of the options for phase zero. And this would be taking the site, once the school's down, the contractor on subgrading. From there, it's hydro seeded and left to be an open meadow. Because of the size, as you can see there, it's almost 16 acres. It's not a small amount of area. It does equate to about just under $200,000 for the overall prep, hydro seeding, maintaining it, and the owner's soft costs, so overseeing construction, all that. That would be able to happen by the fall, through the fall, and it would be done by end of October for that. The next option, kind of one step above, is again that phase zero. Option B is going to turn that open area into a lawn instead. So that would require taking from that subgrade, adding loom or topsoil, so you have a growing medium for lawn, because you can't just put it on subsoil. And then hydro seeding, maintaining, allowing it to establish, and then having an open, a lawn that can be used for various things. No fencing, no backstops, just open lawn. That would be, again, anticipated that it would be fairly easy to do through the fall. But you have to then establish the lawn, so figure that it wouldn't be available until earliest the summer of '21. Once it's seeded, you want to have a few growing seasons before it's turned over and taken. So that's phase zero, two options. The next option is just the construction of the multi-sport synthetic turf field that would be inside of the track on that full build out. And so that would be the multi-sport field. The equipment, athletic equipment that goes along with that. We do have to provide accessibility to that field, because it is on a school campus. And then it would also include some of the future planned utility infrastructure, because we wouldn't want to do things that have to happen under the field, or not do infrastructure under the field that could potentially jeopardize later phases if you tried, if you decide to build it in phase. And then we broke that into two costs, just so you can see whether or not you take under phase zero A or B, whether it's lawn or meadow surrounding that field, and how those costs break out total. So if it's lawn around it, it's roughly 2.6 million. If it's meadow, it's approximately 2.2 million. That project here, as shown, would be constructed through the fall with the intent, weather depending, be able to be closed out before the end of this year, and it would be ready to be used for the spring season. The next option, which is one B, we've added the track and track events to the field. So now you've got a multi-sport field with your competitive track and the programs that go along with the track. And because of the extent of that type of a facility, included the turnaround, the ambulance access, parent drop off, that. Again, we would include the infrastructure. It would have portable bleachers, not the full build out of the bleacher system there. And you can see, again, we've broken that out into two costs, whether you choose to do lawn or the meadow surrounding. The lawn being 6.6, 6.7 million, the meadow being 6.1, 6.2 million. This anticipated would carry through to early next summer. That would be due to the track surfacing is weather dependent to be installed. So they'd be able to do all the construction, but we know from experience that May is probably the soonest the track surfacing would be able to go down for this work. So you would have it carry over and be completed for June of next year. The next larger, this is phase two, we're calling. So this would be the build out of that field and track, as we just mentioned, and then build out of the baseball and softball field. And these are simplified baseball softball, so they would still meet Federation requirements, the whole varsity and softball, varsity JV, you know, community use. But we have done basically the infrastructure with them. They would not include the lights under this, as we've coughed it out for that, and some of the other things later on. So this is really just to get you three fields that could be used for varsity uses. And you can see, we've broken out the cost of lights just for your ability to have for that. So the base project under phase two is 11.85. If you were to add the lighting in for the baseball and softball, and not just the infrastructure, you're looking about another million dollars to do that. With that, those is again, goes back to that revenue and ability of use. By adding the lights, extend your spring and fall use to rent out or other communities to use. We anticipate this would start in the fall of this year and be completed for the fall sports season of 2021. So you'd be closing out this option in August of next summer to be used by the athletes for the fall of 2021. The next option is the full build out, which we talked about before, so I won't go through everything that listed. But this is everything that was in that original master plan full build out. So it adds the tennis courts, the athletic building, the bleachers, all of the lights and all that. This option comes out to 20.3 million. This, we anticipate, because of the size of it, would be about a year and a half construction. So the overall whole thing would be turned over for the spring of 2022. But there is the potential, if this is the option before, that fields could be released in phases or substantially complete, depending on, you know, how we phrase it with the contractor, that certain fields could come online during construction. So it wouldn't be the whole complex turned over at once in the spring of 2022. That is all three options for that. And I know a lot of information here and questions from anyone.
I think it might be worthwhile to go to Kevin's presentation, so that we will have all the information together and then do questions.
So this slide, this slide kind of goes through some of the financing options that we have in order to possibly get to phase two. You see, listed the source of funds, and I'll comment on each, because they do vary. Right now, as we stand today, we are projecting about a $3.7 million surplus in the in the school building project, which we can use toward the project. One of the other options, and some of these you'll be hearing as part of the finance subcommittee's review of this as well. Some of the other options that we could possibly pursue is the sale of 16 and 22 Mill Street. We're conservatively estimating about a million dollars. We do have professional appraisals that would suggest we may. Maybe even get more than that, but just trying to be conservative. In order to do that, we have to take receipt of those proceeds. So we'd have to sell, we'd have to sell the homes first, before we can commit them to the project, obviously. And then by vote of the school. We also have a balance of about 725,000 in our facilities rental account, of which we can commit about 700,000. Stabilization fund, given what we're committing to next year of 85,000.
Excuse me, Kevin, can I interrupt for a second? Could I ask folks to put themselves on mute, so we don't have background noise while Kevin's talking? Thank you.
Okay, so getting back, the stabilization account with the addition of 85,000 that's currently being proposed in our budget would be another 661,000. And then a concept that I know the finance subcommittee has talked about, and that has been using current year capital fees collected toward this project. What we're doing in the FY '21 budget that was voted by the school committee is take the capital fees that are being collected in FY '20 and offsetting that against the building project debt. What this is doing is it's taking capital fees that are collected within the current fiscal year and applying it to the, and applying it to the project. So when we, when we take these sources of funds, it does get us to the level of the phase one option B, which is the one synthetic field with the lawn area. If we wanted to try and extend into phase two, another option which the school committee could avail themselves to and would take simply vote of the school committee was to issue a tax exempt lease purchase of about $6.2 million. That would be based on a 15 year term, about 525,000 a year. The first payment would commence in fiscal '22. And considering that, we need to be mindful that there may be some other revenues that come in in terms of capital fees that we may be offsetting these. Revenue from the project, once the project comes online, which we'll talk about in a minute, that could possibly offset some of this annual payment. And the ESCO lease that we currently have in place is retired in fiscal '24, so that'll drop off about 500,000. I should also note, I reviewed all of these options with our district outside audit firm, and they see no issues with our ability to be able to move forward if the school committee so desired to choose any or all of these options. Now, when we talk about the cost, now we want to take a look at what the potential financial benefits would be by bringing these fields online. I think this is similar to what Luke was talking about earlier in his presentation, just want to try and quantify that. We had done some of our own independent analysis and also worked with the folks in the recreation department for the town of Lexington, trying to get an understanding of, you know, what the, what the market demand was for these types of fields and what the available rental revenue may be, given the number of hours that we could, you know, we could rent the fields. could rent the fields. And after we did our analysis, we had an independent consultant called Ballard King take a look at our data and sort of offer, offer their suggestions as to where they thought we may have been a little bit off the mark. So when we, when we look at the Ballard King analysis, when they look at just the, the phase one B, based on their estimates, they'd be looking at annual field revenue of 183,000. Again, that's just operating one synthetic field in the main so-called football stadium area. If we were to go with the full three synthetic fields, it would be about $400,000 a year. They say to ramp up the first couple of years, three or four, 400,000. And, you know, it may be, maybe even better than that up to 500,000, but 400 seemed to be the, the middle spot when we did the analysis. Our own analysis, again, when we initially did it and had, and worked with the recreation director in Lexington about some of the potential rental times was much higher, about 739,000. We add that just to give you a sense for where we started, where we thought the potential was. And then after getting a, an independent review based on some conservative assumptions, it was considerably low, but it does at least give you a range for perhaps what the potential opportunities are. Now, when we look at the next bullet, we're currently, our athletic programs for the last couple of years, of course, have been all away events and very limited in terms of field access. We've been committing anywhere between 75 to 100,000 a year just for our athletic program in terms of field rentals and, and additional transportation costs. The third bullet, we talked about savings in the district budget in terms of field maintenance. You know, prior costs, we were estimating anywhere from 60 to 75,000. I suspect, you know, when we do a little bit more research on this, if, if we're doing maintenance on a, on a grass or meadow in, in that new section of the campus, it will be considerably more. So then there'll be some consideration about how much those will be, those costs will ultimately be each year that we may want to think about in the analysis. And then this facility will also complement the other potential assets that the, that the campus will have that could create supplemental rental revenue that could, could also offset some of the, some of the cost of the, of the lease that we're proposing. When we look at the theater, the gym, the Paul Revere Room, student union, some of those other areas that will also be generating revenue once we bring those areas online and start to generate some revenue. So the suggestion here that we would like to offer consideration for is if perhaps the finance subcommittee take a look at the Ballard King analysis and some of the analysis that we prepared, just to kind of give an, a sort of a separate point of view, that we could provide our information so that perhaps the, the finance subcommittee could make a recommendation to the full committee just to kind of look this information over and give it us another independent look. And that concludes my comments. Any questions?
Can I just clarify, just for the purpose of the rest of this agenda item, this is for information only, right, and to answer questions? Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. We wanted to give you as much information as we could tonight, then we have a discussion about it. And then we would hope to come back to our June meeting to see if the school committee was, had a willingness to make a decision. Part of that has to do with, we need to move the, this property onto the next phase. And absent that, all we're going to do is use the soil that's out there. We don't have money to even put grass down, grass seed down. So we're just going to have a dirt pile out there, and that's what we're going to be faced with if we do nothing.
Let's see, I saw Sue, then Dave Horton.
I'm really concerned about the level of uncertainty about what's going to happen in the fall overall. I'm concerned about making a decision to spend a lot of money if we don't even know if this, I'm sorry to say this, but we don't know if the school's going to be open in the fall. So I am wondering, y'all must have had some discussion about what happens if the main building isn't open and we're still doing distance learning in the fall. So I, my question then is, what is the cost to, or the downside to delaying this entire thing for a year or two until hopefully the entire state knows more about what's going to happen?
Can I answer for?
Go ahead.
Ford, I was just going to say that the, the first problem is that in order to get your CO signed and, and sign off, we're going to have to do something in that area from a planning and zoning requirement. We can't leave it as just open soil that can erode either into the wetlands or off the property. So either of the phase zeros has to be done prior to sign off of completion of the project.
Okay, Dave?
I, two questions. I don't need an answer for the first one, but I would, I would like that information when the finance committee meets, and that is the size of, of the, the lot for 16 Mill Street and the size of the, of the lot for 22 Mill Street. See, to, let's say a map that shows them in relation to 10 Mill Street and the present, and the new school building, just, just to get an idea of what we're talking about. That would help me anyway to understand, to reach any decision about that if it comes up about selling property, to know just how, how those pieces of property, those two tracks look in relation to the rest of the minimum property. And the second one is, maybe it is, maybe it has been calculated and computed, but I was wondering, do, do we see, just, just KBA envisioned or more people being hired at the school to maintain the fields? If we went to one, one, one turf field or three, what, what is the cost in labor for just that people keeping them, keeping them up without necessarily replacing any of the synthetic turf or anything like that? But is there, has that, has that been calculated or included in the figure of what it costs to run these fields, as it were?
Well, when we did the modeling prior, we had calculated that we could use our, the existing staff now. Some of the staff have been getting trained in, in some, you know, the systems that we have in place now because of the conservation plan, the stormwater protection plan. We have some maintenance requirements of those structures that have been put in the parking lots and around the facility that we have to maintain. And we felt we'd have to buy some equipment, but we wouldn't have to add any staff. And obviously for the big jobs, like, you know, putting new infill, we would hire a contractor to do that, go through a proper procurement for that, but it, it didn't add any FTEs to our.
Okay. That's what I was thinking, just, just the, the normal upkeep, you might say, not replacing anything that required a contractor to do it. Okay, thank you, Ed.
If we had 16 acres of grass, though, I don't know, we might have to.
Yeah.
Help with that.
Right. Or get some goats.
Then you have to put up a fence.
That's a different type of school.
You got animal science coming.
That's right.
Okay, I saw Jeff next.
So looking at that presentation, it seems to me that with only a moderate amount of wishful thinking, we're in the ballpark of being able to afford reasonably option one B with two caveats. The first one is that we have to get even less wishful thinking in it and really understand that revenue a little bit better. And the second is we do have to have input from our member towns on this. And I, that's especially true now with the financial challenges that we're all going to be facing because of COVID and reduced money from the state and on, and on, and on, and on, and on. So the fact, the reason why it's important to consider one B now is that we have to do something. And this something will cost us perhaps a lot more money if we delay for a year or two. So option one B looks like a very paddle, palatable first step and delaying the rest to the future when things maybe look a little bit rosier. But as I said, it looked like, according to your current estimates, we're in the ballpark without wishful, too much wishful thinking. And if we could reduce the wishful thinking further and give people more confidence on those numbers, then maybe we'll get a good reaction from our member towns. And then I don't see the other option, phase two being something that I feel comfortable with it on June unless somebody came down and gave us $10 million for fun. But one B by June, if I, if I had some feeling about what our member towns would think about it, yeah, I can see voting on that possibly.
Okay, thank you. I saw Alice next.
Hi, I, I see the construction phasing options thing up on the screen, so I'm interested in finding a solution that meets the student needs, but also is sensitive to the upcoming expense, lack of funds that we're all hearing is, are going to happen next year, not this year maybe. And I have a couple of questions about the financials. One is, I saw that there was escalation in the construction phasing, but is there also escalation in the lifestyle, lifecycle cost analysis? That's my first question.
Oh, Luke could answer that, I think.
Yes. So as when we factored in the, like the synthetic turf replacement costs, we did factor in based on kind of what we've been seeing for fields that were installed and then replaced and kind of extrapolated that out. So we, you know, we, there's no crystal ball for 15 years from now, but we have tried to anticipate that.
Thank you. And then when you did the calculation of the 900 hours, that was, it sounds like a vocational major, but the 900 hours that was three hour events, what days and times of the week are included in that 900 hours?
Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, from the data that was put together was that the, during school hours, the fields would be used by either PE or classes, but on a, you know, not fully. Then you have your sports, which it would take from, I believe it was about 2:30 to six or 6:30, and then from there rentals for evenings and weekends. So those numbers actually added up to more than the first option, which is the one synthetic and the two natural grass fields could handle in that analysis that was done by the independent that put it together. So that, that's where that came from.
Pam, may I add something that is Ford?
Go ahead.
The schools in the local area along around 128, I think Lexington's one of them, are starting later, they're going to a later start time for high school students. And the students are therefore going to be on their fields later. And I know in Lexington's case, they're looking for lights. That's why we showed a separate light cost out there. And Ford's, you know, optimistic viewpoint, I'm sure Lexington would be willing to put in the lights so they could use the fields. But my point is, there's going to be more nighttime activity just because high schools are getting out later, and that you will especially note in the fall.
Pam, you're muted.
Thank you, sorry about that. Other questions? Jim?
Jim, you're muted.
Yeah. Just can move over. Well, first, first thanks, thanks for all the, for all the information on this. I mean, I think the breakdown in, not just in the three phases, but in the As and Bs is, is very useful. Pam, you know, the finance subcommittee is happy to do whatever you want. I mean, we, I'd like to make sure we had a, we had a direct charge from, from you and from the officers about exactly what you would, you would, you would hope would come from any work that we did. And, and if you want to invite other, other people to join that as, as well, that, you know, I certainly would have no, no problem with that. And then third, I mean, I've, I've raised this in, in smaller meetings, but I know what, that, that it's presented as sort of a, sort of a, a sequence here, but I've always had, had a problem with the track being as high up in the priority list. It's, it's going to be very hard to, to rent a track, you know, I, I, I would hope that we would, that the school on committee would want to at least take a look at just building fields and, and because, because when you take a look at the cost difference between one A and one B, where one B adds the track that raises the cost by 4 million and, you know, to trade off a track that's going to, versus a, a, one or two synthetic fields with, with the lights, just seems like it's, it's, it's worth thinking about.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask. And again, you know, I want to be able to look at this because quite frankly, I'm having a hard time remembering exactly what was included in one A and one B as we're talking about the options. But I too feel that we need to be very sensitive to the cost, particularly in this environment. That being said, I just had a couple of things as part of the presentation, you know, that came to mind. One was as part of the calculation with grass fields, there was a calculation of grass fields being, needed to be offline for a period of time. Is that something that is typically done? Because I have to say, you know, just my observation of schools and fields in the community, I never see fields being put offline. So I'm just wondering if that is something that's typical.
Unfortunately, no. And that's also why when you go to a majority of these facilities that have natural grass fields, you can see the, the bare spots by the middle of the season. If it rains, you can see the, the mud accumulation or the ponding. If you're out there in, in August, you may see the, the dry or burnt out of the lawns. And then you also see, you know, if you look financially, see the schools that, you know, they may do work to it and are back doing major work to athletic, natural grass athletic fields five years later because of the lack of rest and other maintenance things that could have been done, that they've then had to redo kind of the work they did before for it. So our analysis is really trying to keep apples to apples with the condition of the field. So looking at, trying to maintain the grass fields as close to the condition they were in when they're installed and taken over, as is a synthetic field, same condition when it's installed and taken over by the district, not kind of seeing one or the other decline slightly each year, year after year from use.
I have another question. I'm just curious, has there, has anyone done an environmental impact of synthetic fields and kind of having large swaths of, I don't know, plastic or what the material is? I'm just curious if that's something that's ever been looked at.
This project, as most of you are aware, had a very extensive cons comm permitting process we had to go through. And we had to go through permitting in both Lincoln and Lexington. So as part of that. Um, and we had to go through permitting in, in both Lincoln and Lexington. So as part of that, the, they did look at it. Um, the, the field as costed is anticipated to have um the infill product being an acrylic coated. Um, infill, so instead of having direct uh exposure to the recycled crumb rubber, which has been a lot of reports. Uh, with potential health hazards, nothing's ever been proven in any sort of testing that there is. But um this infill is actually coated with a, um, proposed to be coated with a food-based acrylic coating. Uh, that's green in color. So not only does it limit exposure, but it also reduces the summer heat effect that you hear about on synthetic fields.
Thank you.
We also have data we can provide you of um testing of that. Um, basically the breakdown of material and if there is any potential exposure to, to the chemicals, um, that we'd be happy to provide.
Are there any other questions? Excuse me. So at this point, um. There was a suggestion made that, you know, I'd like to ask that the finance committee do a deeper dive into this. And be able to come back to the school committee with recommendations and um. And I'm assuming at our June meeting, we'll have a further opportunity to talk more in depth about this. Um, and I think it'd be a good time for the finance committee to make recommendations as well. Jeff?
I'm particularly interested in understanding option one B. And as mentioned, option one A, but with addition of a second field, second turf field. And some reaction from our member towns. That would be, uh, those would be the things I'm most interested in personally.
Jim?
Yeah, um, I mean, you know, as its name, names suggest that the finance of committee is good at doing finance stuff. But there is a real, you know, non-financial educational and sort of district management point of view. And, and, and so I would encourage you to, you know, to sort of make sure that that gets um grafted on somehow. Either within, within, within whatever process we, we run or, or if you want to have a separate process to sort of take a look at the non-financial questions.
Uh, Alice, then Sue.
Um, I, I'm sort of in the same camp as Jeff, except I'm concerned that the, um, the bucket of stuff that we use to, to produce that. Result ends up leaving us with no cushion in case, I mean stabilization, all of that is spent. And, and there we are with fields and then the state says, well, gee, you know, we're going to cut everything. Um, and, and then we're in trouble. So I'm actually worried about that. I don't. Um, I don't know that. We should be spending all of our, our, you know, piggy bank right away. I don't know. And I think my town, you know, if I went to my town and asked about this, I wouldn't at this point ask them because. Um, I don't feel ready to ask them, but um if I were to go to them, I, I know that they're canceling some of their capital expenses themselves. So I worry about coming to them when they're doing that and saying, hey, by the way, you know, this is what, what's the plan? What do you think? You know, it just doesn't feel right. Um, unless we pairs, we have some um middle of the road answer. And I think Jeff and Jim might have hit on that um option that isn't in here. The, the jump from two million to six million is a big jump. Maybe there is a middle ground.
Um, Sue is next.
Yeah, um, I know it would be very complicated to do this, but I would feel a lot more comfortable. If we could go through something like a best case, most likely case and worst case scenario. It's going to be incredibly complicated because there's so many moving parts and factors and uncertainty. But I would feel like I had a better understanding of the big picture going forward and could better represent. Whatever the school committee comes up with, with my town.
Uh, Jeff?
Uh, with respect to Alice's comment, yes, I, that, one of the things that did occur to me as well was we might be cutting things too thin. But if we're looking at, you know, an amount of money that we're in the ballpark at, one thing you could do is borrow some of the money. In other words, keep not completely use up all those funds by borrowing a small amount of money. So if you look at what they thought phase two would be, they were going to borrow a large amount of money to go through with that amount that does not. Sound very good to me. But in order to get to four million or six million or whatever, we're close enough in the ballpark. Then I bet with a little bit more thinking, we can come up with an idea that is a little more comfortable for us. And always the worst case, average case, best case scenario is something that they, if, that we understand the options enough. We should be able to do something like that, I would think. So I think that what I'm saying is that we're in the ballpark enough that we could probably. Come up with something that'll make us comfortable for one of those middle options is my guess if they, if you work on it a bit.
Are there other thoughts before we wrap this?
Yes, Pam?
Yes.
Um, just out of curiosity, we know we're going to be left over with some money from the project. Um, we've always said that the money that was left over the project would go to the fields. That's what the school committee seemed to imply was going to be the direction we're going in. Do I hear anything, anybody saying that that shouldn't be done?
So I guess um Ford is just trying, I think, trying to get a baseline if um on the issue of using the leftover. Money from the project for the, um, for the fields. And I guess before going to comments, I just want to see, you know, is there anyone who, um. I think it might be easier to find out, is there anyone who sort of disagrees with that statement? That at, at a minimum, the leftover money from the project would go to the field? Yeah, okay. So we're, we're not quite, we're not there kind of universally it right now. I, 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 I think that there clearly is a need to be looking at a number of different options. And there's a finance piece of it that the finance committee could work on, but I think that there are other pieces that go beyond that as well. And um, you know, I think that I want to kind of leave this with a, you know, clear plan for how we're going to do that. And I see some people have comments that they want to make, so let's put that on hold. Um, Sue?
I have two thoughts. One is that um at the point in time where we were seeing this as making great sense. That the excess would go to the athletic fields, we also had a pretty good sense that there would be a decent return on investment. And I don't know if we're there anymore. So that's one of the reasons I'm feeling like I need to understand. The possible ROI much better. Uh, the second point I would make is that I confess not being a team sports person, particularly myself. I don't feel I have a good understanding of what is in the best interest of the Minuteman students. Um, in terms of having a field this fall, assuming they're back in school or the following fall. So I would need some help understanding that. Thanks.
Um, I, I actually have a question that I want to put out. I understand that part of the um. The urgency to make a decision was that we couldn't just leave the um, the fields kind of bare. But it seems like there's a phase zero that needs to happen regardless. Um, so with that is, I guess I want to hear why there's an urgency to, other than moving forward on that phase zero. Why there's an urgency to make a decision by our next meeting on the um full project, athletic field project.
Well, I'm sure others have some ideas about that, especially Greg and Luke, but we're in an MSBA project. That money that's left over was approved for use by the district for this project. So by delaying it, we delay the closing of the project and that means that we delay getting an additional 5% reimbursement. Because they hold, I believe it's 5% until the project is closed. So we would have to, uh, I don't know what the process would be, but MSBA would have to uh be in that loop. If we just can't decide not to do anything, because in our project that they approved, we had an alt one, you might remember. An alternate one that was intended to be used towards the fields. So I, I don't know how much flexibility we have not to use them to do something with the fields. That's almost a legal question, I think. Greg's on there. I don't know if I'm saying it right, Greg.
Uh, so uh, MSBA wise, yes, there's a requirement that we close the project, which uh does require us to get to some level of closure. Both with the contractor and permitting wise. Uh, what you currently have permitted in that field area is the full build of the field. Uh, so that is what you're allowed to build up to. And with that permit for both cons comm and planning and zoning, there are kind of like rolling clocks. Uh, so as those rolling clocks proceed, um, you have a limited amount of time to make uh your permitted project happen. Uh, so as we amended the permits to get to um the fully built out option, those rolling clocks were reset. However, they are still rolling clocks that we either have to accomplish the project that is permitted and/or go back and amend those permits. Uh, doable, but another kind of step in the process. Um, is in regards to kind of that phase zero, uh, if the project was to move forward, um, like. We have talked about uh that perhaps the project moves forward over the summer and bids are able to go out. That may allow us to actually just leave and skip that phase zero portion of the project. So you can go right into the field build. Uh, so that is kind of how that works, how you avoid that first spend on phase zero. And, and are able to allocate that money to what you actually want to do. Uh, we're trying to avoid that phase zero as much as we can, so that you don't have to spend money on something that you're then going back and kind of taking out. Does that help clarify that phase zero and how that works with the timeline?
Additionally, Greg, too, I want to just add that with the full build, the fields are acting as our detention and retention for stormwater within the. Uh, 16 acres. So if we do, uh, if there is a decision to do any less, we, we will have to go back to permitting. Um, but we do have to satisfy the, the stormwater requirements. Um, as Greg said, so the less of the full build we do. Means that there is potentially work you're doing twice if you build it in multiple phases. Because we'd have to put in the lawn and detention, but then it would come out as you build each phase later on. So including double cost, but then escalation, which is about three and a half to four percent per year that the project's pushed out.
Okay, thank you. I'd, I'd like to try and make a suggestion because um. Um, I think that for many of us, we were just getting this information for the first time tonight, you know. And I think that there's a, a lot of probably questions that we still have. And given that we're looking at a need for sort of a, a decision, you know, relatively soon. I'm, I'm wondering about, you know, whether the school committee would be open to considering sort of a meeting in between this meeting and June meeting. For the purpose of discussing this further, so that perhaps we could be more ready or in a better position to make a decision in June. Uh, Ford?
Um, I will do anything to move this project forward, and I think that would be a very wise thing to do. One thing that has not come up, so what about the kids? What about the students? I can't imagine a high school without an athletic field. I just have a hard time imagining it. And I don't know if there's an answer for Matt or George, but how many students do we have that do sports that would. Uh, need to have an outside athletic field? Uh, and I am assuming that's football, soccer, uh, field hockey, if we have it, lacrosse, et cetera. Is there an answer for that?
Well, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but you know, we have always put a pretty high value as a school district on kids participating. You know, we have a no cut, no fee policy, and I think that's indicative of a philosophy this district has had to support kids. Even those that may not have had the traditionally, the opportunity to participate in sports from whatever town they're coming in. Um, numbers in all the sports that we've had, even though we don't have any home games. As the, you know, enrollment has grown, enrollment and interest in those sports has all grown too. George may have a better number than I do in my head, but.
Yeah.
I'm fishing out a number for you right now, texting a few people, see if I can get an answer, but I, but I will just say this. Uh, every time we do presentations in the fall, I guarantee you, I'll, I'll go through an entire presentation. The first question's going to be, how's your football team? What division is your basketball team is? Do you have girls, you know, lacrosse and, you know, on and on and on? Uh, you know, it gets to the point where I, I basically just have to tell the kids, all right, that's great. Are there any other questions besides sports, you know, because uh it's a huge, the huge draw and, and, and interest for kids. And, you know, I, I think I've said it before, I thi, I, I, I imagine that when kids can roll in and see a little stadium in a football field. And that's how they drive in. Um, all of our, you know, we've done a lot to, to help with admissions, but that'll really seal the deal. Because then we'll have it all, the great performing art theater and top-notch athletic facilities to go with it.
And, and I think that's the reason why, you know, I'd like to consider having an extra meeting so that we can spend some more time on this. And be able to make a decision. Um, I did see a few other hands. I saw Jeff and Alice.
Okay, um, fields are very important to kids and the sports are very important to the kids. Wasn't important to me in high school, but it's important to a lot of kids. I think it's very important for long-term enrollment as well. Okay? So, uh, and the reason to do it now. One of the reasons is that some of this money is available now, and over time, this kind of money tends to disappear into other things. So if we don't do it now, I'm afraid that a lot of these opportunities will disappear. The other reason is that we have a, a team that I have confidence in right now, and that may not be true in the future. So uh, we can't do everything we want, but we can do, I think, some of what we want in order to get started on this. And I think that we should. Aggressively explore, continue to explore the possibility of doing so, understanding that it's very important. Understanding that some of the opportunity that we have now may not be true in the future, both in terms of the, uh, the fund opportunities that are available now. And the team that's available now, and I'm afraid of losing those things. So we can't do everything, but maybe we can do, you know, a core per point of this that can be built off in the future by another school committee. That's what I hope. If they can convince me a little bit more that um the funding is not wishful thinking. And that our member towns understand what we're doing, then that's what they need to do for me to get my vote to move forward. But it's not the fact that it's not important. I know that it's very important. I'm comfortable with the team that we have now.
Okay, um, Alice and then I see Dave, and then I'd like to see if we can move off the merits and how then, you know. Talk about how we're going to be moving this forward, the discussion forward. Alice?
My, my question actually has to do with why we're discussing the merits, because I didn't, I can only see nine of you on this place to see your iPad. So um, it, it's really an ar- archaeological iPad. Um, and so I didn't see anybody who was saying, you know. We shouldn't spend the money that's left over from the project on the fields. All I see is yes. And so if there's some no's on the other uh half of the screen that I can't see unless I swipe it, um, I can't tell. So is there any, is there disagreement on, is there a disagreement going on about whether we should spend the remainders? the remainders of the building project on the fields?
We did have one disagreement. Sue, you want to speak to that?
Yes, it's not so much a disagreement as an uncertainty. Among the many uncertainties out there, I am just concerned that we may need the money for something else. And if the return on investment in the fields is not going to be there, not going to be what we hope, then this is a very expensive investment. Four million, if I remember right, four million dollars or something, but right now Minuteman students can go other places to play. And it's not ideal. I get that. But it's also a much less risky venture at the moment. So I'm not saying no at all. I'm only saying that I really want to understand what the returns could be or might not be, so I can present that to my town and let them voice their opinion.
Okay, just kind of the going through my stacking. I had Dave next.
I'd just like to share an email that I received from the director of recreation in Lexington after I asked whether, asked, wrote an email to her to see whether or not there was any, what kind of interest there might be in part of either the town election or groups and election to rent fields from from Minuteman. And here's what she wrote to me. The town is still field deficient, so I imagine that the organizations in town would be interested in renting fields. Then she asked about athletic lighting. With the late start in Lexington set to begin this fall, access to lit fields may be a need as well. Well, we can't accommodate this year. But access to synthetic fields is always of interest. And I think that the youth soccer and youth lacrosse programs would also be interested in use. I can't speak for the school district, middle school and high school athletic needs or wants, but assume that access to additional fields would be of interest. And that's what I received from hers. And knowing the interest that is in Lexington. Look, I would say that there is a potential there, but certainly don't guarantee it. I I just thought I would contribute that to hearing all the other questions and concerns people have. I certainly understand that. I just provide this with you, what I received from Lexington after writing the director of just a few weeks ago, since our last meeting.
Thank you, Dave. That's helpful information. I guess I'd like to ask Ed. Ed, do you see any reason why we could not or should not have tried and scheduled another meeting between now and our scheduled June meeting, just for the purpose of discussing this?
Yeah, it looks like Ed just dropped.
Did we lose Ed?
Yep. Oh, he's back.
I lost everything there. That's interesting. Yeah. So what'd you say?
I was asking you to weigh in on the merits of scheduling a special meeting to.
Oh yeah, we need to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Not just for this, but there may be other issues that come up as the financing of the district moves towards a 112 budget. We don't know when Ways and Means is coming out, but we may need to re-vote our, not our assessment amounts, but how they're allocated in the revenue plan. So yeah, I think we're going to need at least one more meeting before the regular June meeting. Or maybe two that week. I don't know. We'll see. But we definitely going to have to stay together and stay available until the end of the fiscal year. And maybe beyond that, given the, you know, given the scenarios we're all, I hope we're all being mindful of.
So could we ask that, you know, soon after this meeting that we you know, that Julia get out to us with dates for a future, for another meeting in the very near future so that at a minimum, we can continue this discussion and then any other business that we need.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, thank you. With that, we're moving on to superintendent's report.
Pam, just can I quickly thank Luke and Greg for attending and helping us out this evening and for the many hours we spent on what you saw tonight.
Yeah, we.
Yes, thank you Ford. I was negligent in doing that. Thank you very, very much.
Well, I've been living with him, which is a pleasure.
Thanks.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it. It's not necessary, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and thanks for being with us tonight.
Yes, and I guess we'll be back in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I'll connect with you guys to make sure we're tied out for scheduling.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Have a good night all.
You too.
So under my report, I have here plans for remote and onsite learning for the fall of 2020. We've started some very serious in-depth discussions at the administrative level and with some of our teacher leads around what fall is going to look like. I have about a seven or eight page plan that we're looking, you know, we're talking about a framework amongst all my administrators and then we're going to try to put some meat on that bone when it comes to what we're doing. But our sense is to plan for the worst, hope for the best. I think what we're, what I've been communicating to my staff is that we are going to have some combination of remote learning and onsite learning this fall. This is not going away. There will be no return to normal for the rest of my career. And we have to get prepared for it. And we can do it. What we've learned, what I've learned over the last two months in my staff is that we have the capacity, the wisdom, the experience to make the right decisions about this environment and going forward and with the planning of being in school probably at a 50% capacity. If we look at our nine and 11 format and our 10 and 12 format, it's about 320 kids per format. So we're looking at different models that would provide our ninth and 11th graders to be in school on campus for a week. Probably reverting to some sort of a half day model where we're half day vocational, half day academic. And then that following format, they would go back home and do remote learning. But you know, our priority in this, we have some underlying assumptions. And I think I've told you about the assumptions, but our priorities are number one, safety and health of the students, the staff. That's number one priority. We want to continue a quality, hands-on learning as best we can in a, you know, reduced capacity and social distancing in small class sizes. We've got a large number of kids on IEPs that are going to need support in some different ways in the fall. You know, we're obliged to provide technology for kids. We couldn't have reasonably planned for this. No one could have. So we want to make sure that we're mindful of all the information that's available to us. We're mindful of what the governor's saying, what the Department of Health is saying. And we're not going to do anything in opposition to that, but we're not going to wait for some plan book or recipe to come out sometime in July or August, and then we're running around trying to catch up. We're going to have a plan in place in three weeks and that plan is going to be adjustable. It's going to be you know, limber. It's going to be in, it's going to be built by everybody in this school, not just out of my head, not just out of my administration's head. We know we have the wisdom in our group to come up with what's going to serve our kids best. So in light of that, it goes right indirectly, that goes directly in my mind to the financial challenges that we're having. You know, in 18 days, we have to submit a 112 budget based upon this year's this year's money. So I've got a pretty well drafted plan. I've got to vet it out with my administration. And then the next FinCom meeting, I'm going to describe that for the FinCom members. And there will be some layoffs associated with my plan. If we go to a smaller environment with smaller class sizes, we do not need the support staff that we have on payroll right now. There are no teachers that are going to be impacted with layoffs. I actually see the Department of Ed, one really cool thing they did was they put in place, I think in the next couple of days, an emergency licensure process. So if we need to find some people to teach another English class or teach, we're trying to hire some CTE people now, you know, all the testing has been closed to get the licensure. So there's going to be a lot of flexibility in getting teachers licensed under this environment. So we'll see. We'll have some estimates on that. So the remote learning plan is going to continue in a different form next year. You know, I pray that we're going to be able to have some onsite learning because you cannot replace hands-on learning in a well-equipped, beautifully equipped shop with professional staff. You just can't replace that. So I'm very committed to making sure that we're ready and prepared. You're going to know what the costs are going to be. You're going to see what the impacts are. And that may be a separate school committee meeting too, but I know we're going to get to where we need to go within the challenges of this, of this COVID environment. And I don't think, and we're planning for the year after this too. We're planning for FY '22, that this may have to continue. There's no going back to what we had before. It's just, you know, you look at what other countries are doing and the fits and starts and and if you don't pay attention to the noise and you just read the science, that's what we're doing to make some decisions about how to keep our kids safe, keep them learning. And I'll tell you more about it. I seem to do, I don't know, this emergency stuff seems to light me on fire. I don't know. And it makes me really just trust everybody that I've got, because I've got some really amazing staff here that know what's best. And we're working through it all. So I'm not asking you for any vote or anything. I'm just asking you to stay tuned like we get told every day. But we're going to be ready. School's going to be safe. And we're going to be, we're going to be a model in this as we are in other things.
Thank you, Ed. And I want to acknowledge all the work that you and your team are doing in planning and, you know, thinking about different scenarios. So and thank you for everything and everyone who is part of that.
Thank you. I'll pass that on.
I just wanted to say that, Ed, I really appreciate that update. I feel a lot more secure about what's going on, knowing that y'all are thinking through the scenarios and taking seriously that things are going to be different for the foreseeable future. Yeah, I say Ed for president.
Maybe I should have gave my report before the fields presentation.
No, I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Before you move on.
Okay, sorry. I just want to say that I spoke to our town administrator tonight before this meeting and we seem to be committed to having a town meeting in some form, at least to do budget before the end of June.
Great. Great. I hope the legislature makes that easier for you.
It's always an evolving thing.
Yeah, not that I, we have a big vote, but Dover's going to be a meeting near the end of June. They're going to take, because we're an open town meeting, you can do 10% of the quorum. We're just going to do operating and capital budget. And 10% of our quorum is 18 voters. So we will have a budget for you out of Dover.
That's awesome. That's four probably. Alice?
Still has a quorum of zero. So there will be somebody there on June 22nd. I'm hoping they'll approve the budget.
That's five. We need one more. Steve.
Won't be conquered.
It won't be.
The select but are actually talking about perhaps doing it in September, talking to the moderator. It's still, it's still a work under progress, but could very well be September and the town will be going through 112 budgets as well.
Um, Dave and then Jeff.
Just saying the Lexington is starting town meeting next in May and June, so we should be able to vote on the budget by the end of the school year.
You're on twice. You need to be one of you.
You sound like the Borg.
That's what I've been doing. I've been shutting them down.
I think that Needham is trying to move in June. The last I heard, I don't know if there's an update since then.
Awesome.
But anything can change, right?
Yeah.
Jeff, I was with your moderator two days ago. There will be a town meeting. They're thinking of using the high school and spreading everybody out in all the rooms and doing it. So I gather he's committed to doing it in June.
That's awesome news. It's awesome news. I'm just, I'm just going to move along my report, Pam, if that's right.
Yep, just move along. I cannot add Acton to that list. So just move on.
Could I ask for a vote regarding school choice as listed on your agenda?
I will vote to not participate in school choice program for 2020 to 2021 and to inform Desi of this decision by the June 1st deadline.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sue Scheffler Arlington, yes.
Jim Gamble Belmont, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Lexington, Dave.
Dave Horton Lexington, yes. I was muted.
Yep, still in Needham, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes.
Great. Thank you. The next item has to do with approval for out of state travel. It seems like a long ways in the future. But we wanted to get this in front of you now. There's my travel, which is associated with this, which is paid for by NOKD, but Amy is on the call here too. We had two presentations accepted by the national, by the Association for Career Tech Ed by our teachers, and that's what this is for too. I think that was in your packet, right? Amy, do you want to explain what those present, one is on Bs, you know, like and one is on something else. Amy, are you on there still?
Yes, I'm here. So we have two presentations. One is on Bs and it's the integration project that one of our pathways is doing. So that is three different vocational areas, biotech and environmental and horticulture are doing a presentation on Bs and that got accepted. And then the other one is a presentation on our admissions policy and our not policy procedures and how we went from under enrolled to full enrollment and how we got there. Because we thought that our path and what we've accomplished, other people could learn from. So those are the two ones, one on Bs and one on admissions.
Could I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions, any discussion? Jim?
I mean, if, if, if we, if we voted that you should think about, think about booking it now to keep it in this fiscal year and there's probably like a round trip flight for $17 now.
Good, good, good advice. And the staff gets a stipend too from ACTE for some part of it. So it helps offset costs and registration and such.
Any other questions, Alice?
I just think it's really great to be talking about something like Bs. I don't know who else is excited, but I'm excited. I think it sounds great. I hope you get to go.
Yeah, I hope it's there. Okay, let's do a roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sue Scheffler Arlington, yes.
Jim Gamble Belmont, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes?
Dave Horton Lexington, yes?
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes?
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes, go Bs.
Go Bs. Okay, moving on.
They call me that, Dr. B.
Anything else under the superintendent report?
No, that's good, I'll let George talk about our incredible graduation plans. And if his audio starts to fall in and out, I'll take, pick up or Amy will.
Okay, go for it, George.
Okay, so I'm pleased to announce that on June 5th, at 2:00 PM, Minuteman will be hosting a drive-in graduation. So the way it'll work is the ceremony, a truncated ceremony will be live streamed using all the capacity that we have at Minuteman through multimedia. It'll be live streamed on Facebook and YouTube. And we're going to, we're going to set up the parking lot with a sign parking. Kids will drive into their spot, they can decorate their car. It's one car per family. And we will call them up. They will drive the bus loop right up to the front, and when they get to the front, we'll place their diploma. And we have, some of them are getting scholarships, we weren't really able to execute that awards night, but they'll be getting their diploma, scholarship, whatever, other little trinkets that they've earned. We'll have a photographer there, so they'll be able to take a picture in their cap and gown, you know, big wave to the crowd, get back in the car. And then the plan is to just have them exit, exit the facility at that point. We're going to have the velvictorian salutatorian class president pre-record speeches. And so once we're done filming the entire, you know, the procession of kids driving up and all that, Drew O'Conners and probably a few others will edit and put it together and send it out to all the kids. We're also setting up a virtual after-party so that the kids afterwards can get on to the Microsoft Teams and just talk about the event. Hopefully they enjoyed it. We've got Lincoln Police Department there, they're going to send a couple cruises. We're working to get the fire department there just to add to the whole, you know, kind of ceremony. But also make sure that kids stay in their cars and maintain social distance because we're a little concerned about that, I'm sure they're going to want to really, you know, get out and hug each other and see each other. But we're pretty, we're pretty excited about, about doing, doing this for the kids. You know, they've been through a lot, they lost a lot, they lost a lot this year. So, you know, it's nice to be able to just try to get them out, you know, at least on the day when they were going to get out. Part of that was strategic for us too, we really, we looked at, should we wait till summer? I know some places are, but we thought, we don't know what the summer is going to bring, we don't know if it's going to be any better. So let's just do what we can on time, give them that. And then we really need to focus our attention really on the fall and the next group coming in. So anyway, you're invited, if you'd like to come, just let us know. We'll make sure we put out a chair for you and that you're six feet apart when we're outside. Hopefully we'll get good weather, if it's, if it's bad weather right now, we're thinking the following Friday, just in case. Any questions on the graduation?
Jeff and then Jennifer?
Reading this made my day.
Yes.
That's my only comment.
Oh.
Yeah, it's very exciting, so glad you're doing this, Jennifer?
Okay, so I have a practical question, as far as the scholarships are concerned. If, are they extendable beyond next school year? Because I know a lot of kids are, I've been asked, you know, people have asked me questions. They're planning to defer for a year because they're not sure what's going to be happening in the fall with their colleges. So are these scholarships, can they be extended through, for the following year?
An awful lot of them, actually, the kids will get a check in their name. So they can do what they want with it, you know, so like in that way, yes. I think actually almost all of them are. Yeah, I know the NPAs definitely are, I mean, they donated $7,000 this year, which is an increase, and they're going to be writing the checks out themselves directly to the kids, so. And a lot of them will like that, so I don't see any issues that way.
Okay, Dave?
I think it's a terrific idea, I'm so glad you're doing it. I'm wondering, will the school committee role be more, be a passive one? Or is there any sort of active part for us in the graduation? Not that I'm asking that we have one, I just wondering if you had, was it a passive, one that's planned or an active one?
On that particular day, it would be passive because we're concerned about, you know, really the ceremony would be, you know, I might say "Good afternoon", like I do every morning when they're off with the announcements. And then, you know, really just turn it over to Dr. B, let him say a few words. And then we want to try to, we're not sure how that's going to work, you know, we're getting the cars up and around and what that'll look like. But, so really for that particular day would just be ceremony, you're just there on the stage. However, you know, since we are pre-recording pieces of other speeches, if, you know, if you wanted to present something, that's really easy to do now. We're getting really good at remote video recordings. So if you'd like to wish them well, we could certainly incorporate that into the final video edit.
Thank you, George.
Sure, I think that's nice, I think they'd love to see that. The other thing, we had teacher appreciation last week, which was, you know, I had been working with the Minuteman Parents Association back in late January, we had all these great ideas. And then, of course, this happened and, you know, all those plans really, really fell apart. But I want to thank Dan O'Brien for helping pull together a video tribute that the, you know, the administrative team put together, just to thank the teachers, you know. I will stress what, we've done some, we've done a lot of interviews in the last couple of weeks. And, you know, it's really rings true for me because what I see in the staff right now and what we expect of any new staff coming in. And the faculty that we have, it's three, the three Cs. It's competence, caring, and collaboration. And they have been showing that in spades, you know, the last, the last few weeks. Getting the job done, getting results, you know, making sure that all the social, emotional needs of the children are taken care of. And just working together to figure out how do we get more results and how do we make sure that these kids are doing all right? And how do we, you know, how are we going to plan for the future? It's just really been incredible. So the video is about a minute and a half, I think Dan might be able to queue it up and show it to you if you want to let him see it.
I can try to share the screen, so if you guys want to just bear with me, I can try to do that. Sorry, can you guys see it?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, Dan? Dan, you, you're going to need to, to, to share the audio of your PC. So there's an option on the, on the controls to, to share your audio.
Okay.
I got it. You want me to try?
Yeah, sorry, I can't figure this out.
This is why I made you do it.
You know?
Yeah, Dan, Dan, it's in, it's in the lower right-hand corner. So if you go to participant or screen share, it should be in the lower right-hand corner. It should say, share computer audio.
I just have share screen. I could send you, you know, if this isn't going to work, I'll just send you guys the link, sorry about that.
Yeah, the link is in your packet down there, so.
Okay.
Sorry, we tried.
Also, it was on Facebook, so you can get it on the Minuteman Facebook.
Okay, thank you, I think we can, we will look it up after the meeting, thank you for trying.
Sure, sure. Under calendar, we typically, we would have MCAS dates to give and make amends to the calendar. But we don't have those dates, I don't know if we ever will, I don't know if it's coming back or not or what. So there are no changes that require anything, you know, up at, up at this level. And any changes that we made this year to the schedule going forward, obviously there's no MCAS. You know, it's changed formats a little bit, but again, that isn't really a school committee concern, truly. I don't think it's just, just how we operate so the kids know when they're going to be in session and when they're not. But very, very minor that way. And then lastly, for admissions, so we're looking at, we still look like we're going to have 182 expected freshmen to be coming in. That seems to be holding up just great. We've, for the first time, we had to do our admissions testing, you know, in math and English, online. And since we were doing it online, we took the opportunity to add a writing component. So we have a reading component, a separate writing component, component that the English teachers put together themselves and, and the math. So at this stage, 92% of that 182 have, have completed all three, which is outstanding. And 98% have completed at least one. So we're really getting an awesome return on that. In addition to that, 72% of the kids and families have completed all of their enrollment packet information, which is, which is really good considering, you know, it's remote and, you know, we don't typically have a number like that for another month, to be honest, it usually takes a while. But, but we have, you know, people are really paying attention and following through. This week, we plan to do, finish off a virtual parent orientation. We'll be sending out the presentation that we would have done with them in the school. Now we're going to record over and send it out, so that'll happen hopefully early next week. It'll all be tied up and, and sent out. And our student ambassador corps has been creating little welcome videos and best wishes videos. And those, those actually started going out today, is my understanding. And we'll be sending them out, just to kind of keep it top of mind for kids. And lastly on that, we'll be, there's a, got an invite today for a meeting. We're going to really start thinking about, you know, how do we recruit in the age of COVID? You know, what are we going to do if we most likely cannot enter an auditorium with 200 kids? You know, what kind of strategies, what are we going to do? I think a lot of that, you know, we're going to see a lot more video and we're going to really need to spend a lot more time making sure we have high-quality video productions that are, that are quick, that are grabbing, that really give our message across. So, you know, I know Dan will be a part of that, you know, obviously Tony Chirialdo, myself, and we'll be pulling in a few other people along with that to make sure that that happens. But that is your admissions update, pretty status quo, but looking good.
Great, could I ask one question? I know we've been talking about that, you know, did it hold that all 182 are from within member districts?
Almost all of them, I think you have, hold on, scroll through another spreadsheet here. You have seven out of district, it's Watertown, Belmont, and Boxborough are where those kids are from at this moment. But it's mostly, you know, if we were shooting for one, I think in the fall, we were, I think you had wanted 160. And, you know, we're looking at like, you know, 177 in districts, so we hit the mark.
Okay, any questions for George? Okay, let's move on to finance. Is going to go first?
Agenda item A is for Jim, for the finance subcommittee, he prepared a report that he, he liked to review for us.
Right, and it's, and it's a part of your package. This is based on a draft that we had, we had a full meeting on, like to thank Dave and Steve and then also Ford. And Alice were part of that meeting as well too, as well, as well as a full compliment of the administration staff. It is written mostly with a pre-COVID point of view, but that, that was in the back of my mind. You know, view this as a resource for you as you think about these field and finishing the building project questions. And, and it sort of helped me to sort of think about it from a, from a member towns, towns on the point of view. I mean, I think Jeff has certainly mentioned that you've got to go back and talk with your town officials. And it's, and it's got the kind of information that would be useful to sort of frame those, frame those conversations. I will go through it quickly. I think if you have any comments or questions that you want us to think about for the next finance subcommittee meeting, Ed, I think it would make sense if, if members sent them to, to Julia and she could collect them and then send them out as part of the finance, finance package. So, so just on, just on the first page, table one, I mean, I call it good news, bad news. And, and, and the great news is that the, the school is, is, is a success. You've got 175 freshmen from member towns coming in. And if that holds up for the subsequent years, which I would fully ex, ex, expected them to, to do, it means that the school is basically going to be dealing with students from member towns. And that means that member towns are going to have to pay a larger share of their, of the, of the operating cost than they have in the past. And it's going to grow the overall collective assessments to the member towns faster than what the local property tax, tax rate, rate can, can go. But that's, but that's, that's all in the good news, that you've got more and more students who want to come and take advantage of the school. And table two sort of shows that, you know, that using, using this year's enrollment as a, as a base and a fairly modest growth in the operating budget. And what is now an optimistic view about what the state aid is going, going, going to be, the total assessments are going to go up, you know, nine or 10% per, per, per year for the next five, five, five years or so. And this is on top of the debt service ramping up to its, to its long-term base. This, this current year that we've just paid 3.1 million in debt service, but starting in fiscal year '22, that annual debt service number is going to be at five, five and a half, five and a half million. And it's going to basically plateau there. And as table four shows, is as the number of non-member, non-resident students falls, we will, the, the district will collect less and less from, from the non-member capital fee. So that debt service, not only is it ramping up now to a new level of five and a half million, but it means you'll have, you'll have less non-resident to, a capital fee to pay for it. So it's just, you know, you should keep in, you know, in mind that this is, this is a, a that, that your town may view this as a challenging financial environment. The good news is that it's, that it's based on, on this, on the success of the school and the fact that there, that the students in your member towns want to come here. So, so with that as a backdrop, when you take a look at the, at the, at the possible, possible capital projects there, what we did was we sort of grouped the funding sources in three different buckets. Buckets, one is what we sort of have on hand here now. And, and it, and it covers what Alice had talked about, about cushions, you know, the various cushions. But we just sort of thought about, okay, if we go to all the different accounts that are currently in-house, what could be possibly directed to help pay for these capital projects? The second category is, is thinking through what revenues can these capital projects create that will help off, off, I said, any, any cost there? And then, and then the third, I've put into the category of the incremental member assessments. I mean, these, you know, whether it, whether or not it's a And then, and then the third I've put into the category of the incremental member assessments. I mean, these, you know, whether it, whether or not it's a, a formal, um, ask, um, of, of your town meeting to, to pay for, um, capital projects. It, it, it is effectively that, that one way. That if you go through, table six is, is a, is a table that sort of summarizes that and the text sort of goes, goes through it. But the most important part of the internal, um, resources is the surplus from the building project as it stands now. And, you know, as a conservative number, it looks like it's 3 million. It may be up to 3, 7, 3, 8 now, which is great, which is a great, uh, great, great place to start. Kevin sort of talked about the same sort of categories we had, we had talked about in terms of, you know, that you could go in and, um, look at the stabilization fund, look at the facilities re, re, revolving fund. Those are all one-time sources. And once that money is spent, it's not there for any other purpose, but it's certainly there if, um, if, if, if that's what the school and committee wants to do to fund these projects. Also, we've talked about, um, selling the Mill Street, uh, properties. The, um, on the project revenues, um, you know,
Can you mute yourself?
Yeah. On, on the project revenues, um, sort of like two broad comments there. One is that, you know, that the solar, given the fact that the lead payment is tied to it, um, it's very easy to sort of think of that as being justified one way or the other, whether, whether it's going to take a long-term lease or, 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 or whether it's paid, paid out out of in, in, internal, internal resources. On the athletic facilities, um, you know, the question that I think the, the finance subcommittee's got to really dig into is, you know, what, what is a, what is a likely fee and what is, you know, how, what is a reasonable guess about the number of field hours that can be rented? I mean, I think, I think, I think some of the numbers we've seen have close to, you know, 90% or 100%. And that may be on, on, um, the optimistic side. And so when we, when we, um, come back, we'll try to make that clear about what, what are the, what are, the underlying assumptions there. And then on the third category, um, which I call the incremental member assessments, um, there are sort of like three ways to get the towns to pay for these capital projects. One is by not giving back the non-resident, um, capital fees. I mean, right now in, in next year's budget, we've already committed to turn back the $924,000 that was collected last year. But, um, it's reasonable to sort of think, oh, over the next five years, the district's going to collect maybe three, three or four million dollars, dollars more. You should think about holding on to it if you want to spend that much on your capital projects because for seven of your nine towns, if you hold that back, the town managers will be able to pass that through in terms of the debt, in terms of the debt overrides that your towns have already passed. Whereas if you turn it back to them and lower their capital cost and then, and then come back to them and say, oh, we have a new capital assessment. It is going to have to come out of, it's going to have to come out of the operating stuff. So I think it, I, I think while there is going to be some pushback about holding on to the capital revenue, I think if you go through it, the town managers may sort of see some benefits to doing it that way if they, you know, agreed to the overall, um, capital spend. The other two ways is to use a, a lease or actually go back and get new debt. You know, financially, those are equivalent. The only difference is that the school committee could do the lease on its own, whereas the debt would call for, for the more, I mean, uh, for, for a process that goes through, um, through the town, town meetings. So,
I can just make a point there, Jim?
Yeah, sure.
It wouldn't necessarily have to go through town meeting. It could be approved by non-disapproval as long as the town managers all agreed.
Right, right. So, um, I mean, so that's, so, 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 so view this as a resource, resource document for you to have at, at your disposal between now and our next, next meeting. If you've got comments or questions that you want to, um, uh, pass back to us, I think doing it through, doing it through Julia makes, makes sense. In, in light of the earlier conversation we had, um, I mean, we will, we will, we will go back and take a look at the projects them, themselves and, and, uh, and to try to give some more financial color to them. But I think, I think this sort of gives you a sense of, of the resources that you've got, um, at hand. And that's it, Pam.
So thanks so much, Jim. Um, and then thank you and the rest of the finance committee and everyone else who worked on this. It certainly gives us a lot to chew on. And again, you know, if people have questions, submit them to Julia so that we then can have more of a discussion coming up at our next meeting. Moving on to the bond notes, who is doing that?
Dan, Kevin?
Kevin.
There I am. So, uh, including your packet is a, uh, is a, is a memo that talks about the need to, uh, borrow for, uh, one year bond anticipation notes for about 3.8 million dollars. This is, uh, to, uh, meet the cash flow obligations we have to close out the project, uh, finish up the punch list and settle, settle any obligations that we may have, as well as finance the 5% holdback that MSBA is holding on our grant that the superintendent mentioned earlier until such time as the project is closed out. Based upon my discussions with the project team, it looks as though the process to close this will probably take about a year. Once the final audit is done. So we'll, we're, so we're proposing here, um, that, that we are, uh, financing for, for one year. We received the bids and have awarded, uh, the bids to Oppenheimer. You'll see the results. We did get the three bids. Oppenheimer was the low bid and the coupon was 1.75%. They paid a premium to buy the net interest cost down of 1.388. So the net interest cost is about, uh, $53,000. So a, a formal vote is not required because it's under the broader authorization of the, uh, of the, uh, of the building project. And I've already coordinated with the chair and the secretary and the treasurer to take care of the, um, of the bar, of, of the band. So I just, uh, wanted to share that with you for information.
Thank you. Um, moving on.
Next, next document. Yes, Pam, thank you. Agenda item C is the third quarter financial statements. In your package, you were provided with the financial statements for the third quarter that were, were reviewed at the April 28th finance subcommittee meeting. These financial statements, uh, were relatively on track. Uh, and we're not greatly impacted by closure because that occurred two weeks before, two and a half weeks before the end of the third quarter. But there were some leading indicators in that if you look closely, you'll see some of the financial disruption can be found in the revolving fund statement. Horticulture have its annual Easter holiday sales and as a result, they're already showing a deficit of $701.07. Also food services showing a deficit, um, as a result of the school closure. That calculation, uh, had some long-term, uh, calculations in it. So I don't expect it to be too much more by the end of the year. Uh, as opposed to, there may be some other deficits that we'll see in some of the revolving funds. I think we're pretty strong on most of the student activity funds. But there may be a couple of areas that we're going to have to look at. So the plan here now is that, uh, instead of having quarterly reports, I've already started doing monthly reports. And instead of just monthly reports, I'm doing bi-weekly reports as recently as, uh, this week. Plan on sharing with the, uh, finance committee at our next meeting so that they can see the strategies that we're working on as administrative team. And so we're going to be tracking it very closely and we'll be getting the FinCom, uh, much more accurate numbers as to the impact of the school closure, uh, on our budget. Any questions?
Okay.
If not, I'll move on to discussion, discussion of fiscal year 20, fiscal year 21 budget and the 112th budget. And again, I provided a summary, so to speak, for the school committee, that identified all the resources and considerations for the fiscal year 20 and 21 budget. Dr. B and I have attended many conference calls, uh, many meetings with federal and state organizations. There are lists, some of them are listed there, but we've had even more meetings. And too often, as Dr. B said, we hear, stay tuned. We still haven't gotten some definitive answers on certain things that we need. But they are slowly helping us to understand where we're going. As of today, we're awaiting the guidance and streamlined 112th budget template. In the past, they didn't have a template, but because they know that I believe almost every regional school district and many municipalities will be working off a 112th budget. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is putting together a template for us. They expected it to be out this week. So we'll see. More specifically on the wealth 112th budget, because, um, a lot of us have not lived through that. The guidance that I shared with you in that, uh, yeah, in your packets, basically gate, I'd like to highlight some of the key elements that just have to happen as soon as possible. Uh, the superintendent will have to send a letter to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Office of Regional Governance, honor before June 1st, uh, 2020. He will be identifying that our member districts, uh, have annual town meetings in, uh, the month of June, and we can hope that we will get the six votes, as he mentioned, uh, before the end of June. But if we don't, we have to be prepared and have this plan in place. So he's been working diligently on that and with the, uh, with the finance office. Also, uh, we're going to have to collect data for him to put in his letter, the financial information on both fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21 because the 112th budget is based on the fiscal year 20 budget. Although there are some nuances to it, it's not exactly the same assessment. It will be slightly more. But there's a lot of nuances that we're digging out that data to help when Dr. B presents that to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And we'll have to document all the steps we're taking. Hopefully the steps will happen quickly and the month of June will be good to us and we'll get that budget approved quickly. The commission of education will set that 112th budget based on the information we provide him. And, um, it will have to be based on the, uh, statutory method because that is what the Minuteman Regional Agreement requires. There is an alternative method, but because our, our regional agreement requires it based on the statutory assessment, that is what will be, he'll be using. So, um, that's a quick summary of where we are with fiscal year 20, fiscal year 21. And as I said, I really plan on providing a lot of data for the finance committee so that they can see the strategies we're trying to use to end this fiscal year, support the next fiscal year, um, and work through the 112th budget process. And that's my presentation. If there's any questions anybody would like to ask? Okay.
Very brief comment.
Yes.
The comment is, I find it strangely comforting that the state bureaucracy continues to grind on despite the level of chaos. That's where I'm at right now. I'm also hopeful that we won't have to go to the 112th budget. So,
Yes.
But you got to plan for it, obviously.
Plan for the worst, hope for the best. Dr. B keeps helping us all through that. So the last item, uh, is actually a very positive news and it's the discussion of the transportation, uh, invitation for bid, rebid. As the school committee knows, they allowed us to go out for a rebid because the initial bid did not come in, at our budget that we had planned. Uh, the, the rebid process, uh, for school transportation was posted on April 8th, for a five-year contract, which is why the school committee is being, is approving it tonight. If it was under three years, it wouldn't come before the school committee, but this is a long-term contract. So we're bringing it for you, forward to you tonight. The bid was open on May 5th, 2020. The two bids were submitted by CNW Transportation and NRT Bus. CNW Transportation bid the first year bid at $1,495,534. NRT Bus bid the first year cost at $1,373,245. The fiscal year, uh, 21 school budget for school transportation is $1,486,415. Therefore, the lowest responsible bidder, NRT Bus, their bid was $113,170 less than our current budget. So going for the rebid turned out to be a, a, a win for our budget. We, it, they've come in under budget. So I would like the school committee to vote, uh, the, the vote that was, uh, that the vote award to award to NRT Bus Incorporated, North Reading, Mass. The Minuteman Vocational Technical School District, bid 2030 dated April 8th, 2020, representing the regular in-district transportation late buses, athletic practice buses, athletic activity buses at a bid price of $1,033,329 for regular route buses, $265 per day for late buses, $250 per bus for athletic practice buses, and $4.10 per mile and $64 driver waiting costs for athletic and activity trips. Such total bid costs of $1,373,245. And on the basis of there being the responsive and responsible bidder and in the best public interest.
So moved and I'm glad I didn't have to read that, Bob.
Okay, discussion Alice and then Jim.
I just want to say that, um, on our page, it says a bid 2003. Bob, you read 2030. I think I'm, I'm just correcting it for the audio record because it is a bid.
Thank you so much.
Jim?
Oh, yeah, um, uh, so, um, the issue, the issue for next year is whether or not, what is, what is going to happen if bus services are not provided because of, of continued shutdown? And is there any in these, in these bids or?
There is. So there's an interesting, um, situation this year regarding bus transportation because, uh, chapter 41, section 56 says that you can't pay for services you're not receiving. So there are a lot of bus companies uh, and communities that are worried about how they're going, what's going to happen since they haven't been providing a service. Uh, all bids moving forward, we were advised would need a force majeure clause in it so that this wouldn't impact people in the future or bus companies in the future. And so that, that clause is in this contract.
So, I mean, so we are on the hook for this, whether or not we use the services.
Right. We wouldn't, we would not have gotten any bids if we didn't because of what's happening right now in fiscal year 20. And, and however,
And then, and then as sort of a side, um, side thing, has, has there been a resolution with this year with C, CNW?
There has not. Uh, the other thing I would say is that Dr. B did talk about the not knowing what's going to happen in fall, there might be, um, a plan in place to reduce the number of students in school each day. The contract does allow us to reduce the number of bus runs. So in theory, this is coming under budget. And, you know, our hope is that there will be some sort of schooling going on in our school. And so there is, it's a very fair contract in that we can reduce the number of bus runs. And it's also, also a very fair contract in that it was based on the first year. And there are clauses for, um, the colas and the fuel, um, adjustments so that there's no, um, economic, uh, problems for either the vendor or us. So it was a very fair contract. I think both for the vendor, but also for us because it controls our costs for five years.
So if I might though, I think so if we have to go to a social distancing on a bus, the capacity goes from 46 down to 23. So how would we get more kids there without adding buses? If you add more than 25, according to contract, this contract and IG's advisory, If you add more than 25, according to the contract, this contract and IG's advisory, if you add 25% more or less capacity to the contract, you have to rebid it. So I'm looking at the legality of paying parents to bring their kids to school, you know, getting car pools coming in from wherever. We're also looking at our driving privileges requirements as it's currently written. And then also, we'd have to respond to the distancing recommendations at the time, like could kids bring other kids if their parents approve and that sort of thing? So, you know, Uber's not happening, but we're looking at some creative ways to get kids here without increasing our bus costs. We're also looking at the idea of a transportation stabilization fund so that if we can keep some of that leftover money this year that we didn't spend in another bucket other than the E and D bucket, it's going to allow us to fill the E and D bucket up more. You know, we're going to lose some reimbursement in another year because we didn't spend all the money. So transportation is another, you know, it's another episode in this nightmare. So stay tuned, though.
We keep hearing, stay tuned, from the Department of Ed, which is why it's drilled in our heads. But, yeah, Dr. B. definitely articulated a lot of the factors that we have to work through. But I would like a vote on this tonight because I do feel it's a fair contract.
Okay, I think we had, Dave had a question.
Yeah, my question's got answered. Pam, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, let's do a roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sue Scheffler Arlington, yes.
Jim Gamble Belmont, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
People who conquered, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
David Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Also Lucas Joe, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to subcommittee reports. Jennifer, and we'll note that your name is still wrong on the agenda.
Yeah, it happens all the time. No worries. Okay, so the subcommittee met at 5:30 today and made a recommendation. You guys, everybody got the results of the evaluation? It was pretty impressive. I think there was pretty much universal support for what Ed has accomplished in the last year and what he's faced going forward with this crisis. So does anybody have any questions about the evaluation?
Thank you, everyone.
So the subcommittee did vote to make a recommendation to the school committee for.
Oh, Jennifer, we're losing you.
Perfect.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So for the increase for Dr. Bakulon going forward, it was felt that, given the fiscal hardship that people are in the state and especially the municipalities are going to be facing in the year to come, to not try to increase the compensation more than what the contract allowed. So the contract allowed 2.33%, and the subcommittee has voted to recommend that increase. Any questions on that?
Thank you.
We would really have liked to do something more, given what you have accomplished, but we didn't think that it would be something that would have increased our profile with the member communities. Sorry. So my assumption is we can vote as a school committee now for that increase for Dr. Bakulon going for the 2020, 2021 cycle.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Alice?
I think we should vote, but I think we should put an agenda item for the vote on the next meeting as well, just to, you know, make sure the vote is on the agenda.
So noted. Julia, you got that? Okay.
Okay, let's do a roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sue Scheffler Arlington, yes.
Jim Gamble Belmont, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Dave O'Connor, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Dover Lancaster, Jennifer. You're on mute.
Is that now?
Yeah.
Okay, it wouldn't unmute. Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
David Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Also Lucas Joe, yes.
Thank you.
So thank you all very much. I appreciate working with you. So just, I wish I was 40 years old, you know? And I wish we were all staying on it.
Well, thank you for all you've done, Ed. Moving on to secretary's report, Dave.
There are just two minor changes. One, on page two, Jim Gamble's name has too many Ms. in it, although Jim is an expansive person and perhaps deserves to have a longer name, but we will delete one of the Ms. And on page three, although it didn't appear on the screen, under C, second paragraph, the second paragraph seems to be extended to the right. It appears on the printed copy all right, but a couple of words, I think, were missing from the on-screen. So we'll take care of that. So the only other change would be to spell Jim Gamble's first and last name correctly under that first photo on page two. So I move that the minutes of April 7, 2020, as amended, are approved.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Pam Nurse Acton abstain.
Sue Scheffler Arlington, yes.
Jim Gamble Belmont, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
People who conquered, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
David Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Also Lucas Joe, yes.
Okay. Number 10 is possible executive session. Ed, do we have a need for an executive session?
No, you can entertain a motion to adjourn.
How about a motion?
I have one comment before we adjourn. Comment is, although it is not really practical to do so under these circumstances, Ed, why don't you pretend that we're all giving you a long round of applause for your performance over this last year? And years, what happened this year?
Thank you.
Okay. And a second, Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sue Scheffler Arlington, yes.
Jim Gamble Belmont, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
People who do conquer, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
David Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Also Lucas Joe, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Pam.
We'll hear about dates for another meeting.
Be well, stay safe.
Good job, Ed.
You all. Good night.